We'll call the Board of Education meeting to order at 1:03.
Can I take this home?
Quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of November 14, 2017 is called back to order. First order of business is public participation in the State Board of Education meeting. Marilyn, are there any ones who wish to address the board?
I have one public participation form. I'm going to have a second one, I guess, in a second here. The first one is Linda Cybert Kilborn. And I will just remind you, there will be five minutes for public participation, and the board's happy to listen to what you have to say, but they do not engage in conversation. But Libby, you've been here before. You know the rules, I think.
Or I'm learning, anyway. Good afternoon. I'm going to introduce myself in a jibber-wei language. I just made a mad drive up here, so I'm trying to settle down. Buju, hani nishna, javan anemkiko, dishas makash, shekendodum, porzitamas river and donjaba. My English name is Linda L. Cybert Kilborn. What I said was, my name is Southern Thunder Woman. I'm Turtle Clan, and I reside in the Marshall Albion area. I'm basically here today to ask for support for a bill that was introduced, SB 487, to remove our word from the public school systems. We're hoping that we can get support from the board on that bill. Also, too, to let you know that I did file complaint letters to all 52 schools in Michigan back the end of June, first of July. And there was a couple of responses here I wanted to share with you. One of the schools' logos that they have shows a sacred pipe. And the trustee that sent this to me says, you know, basically, as you can see above the logo, which you certainly can see, it's not offensive in any matter. This is a religious item. This is our sacred pipe. That, to me, is very offensive, so they don't get it. So I'm going to share these two things with the board so they can read for themselves. Also, too, I came up last month, and you guys weren't here. I didn't know you was going to Grand Rapids. So I was basically coming up to kind of re-bute a couple of things I'd seen on the tape the previous month. And that was a lady that was here and was giving you information, which she has every right to do, but I think if you're going to come, you should at least give truthful, honest information. One of the things that was stated was at the Paw Paw Wine and Harvest Festival, there was 100 students there. And that's not true. That's not actual. And also, too, that the Michigan Coalition had meetings with the chief of police. The Wine Harvest Festival had meetings. It was all legal as far as getting consent. The plan was all worked out with the town. They had roped off a section by the village hall for us to give educational material out and speeches and things like that. And the police escorted us down to that area that they had taped off and gave us a certain amount of time, basically, to be there to do this. When we got downtown, we were greeted by about six cheerleaders and two or three younger boys, led by the lady who approached you, and had encouraged them to have racist signs and be yelling heckling remarks to us and everything else, which, you know, we tolerate that kind of stuff. But anyways, and she made a comment something about, "We crossed the line." Well, there was a yellow tape there, so we didn't cross any lines. But we were approached by people who obviously had been drinking. I mean, they reaped of liquor anyways. And there was a confrontation by this because one gentleman came across the line and confronted one of the native elders that was there, who was carrying a prokagan flag, and was making some very rude comments. So I just wanted to clear up that, that it wasn't quite the way it was portrayed to you. We always go in as an educational group. We always clear things through legal departments and things like that before we do things, if we have to have permits or whatever. You know, we always follow through that way. The one thing I did want to show you was this young man right here is a Paw Paw student. He is wearing a, what they call a headdress. I think he was trying to interpret our spiritual headdresses. And is supported fully by the lady who comes up here and speaks. And I just want to point out, this is what members in Paw Paw support. This is what they're supporting. And I know it's kind of redundant. You guys have heard it 1,000 times. You've seen it and read it. But I just wanted to kind of bring it up again, that this is what we're dealing with. And we have tried to educate. We have done everything that we can do. So anything, if anybody has any other ideals to help, we ask for it. But right now, we do have the SB 487 Senate bill. It's in the Government Operations Committee. If you could make phone calls to that committee and ask them to, you know, get that bill moving, so we can have some hearings and get it out, we greatly appreciate it. And that's basically what I had to say today. So thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Our final speaker is Brunda Ammon.
Hi there. I'm grateful to be here today. I'm passionate about education, and I am super excited about Michigan being a top 10 in 10 years. And so with that thought, I'm not sure how aware everyone is of Michigan Virtual, their online learning, and the state has backed them by millions of dollars, and they have been the chosen one as online learning in the state. I have kind of been forced into a position to learn about them a little bit because I had two students that took an online health course, and they did not finish on time, and they were not allowed an extension. This, Michigan Virtual, is a private nonprofit, but is solely backed by the state of Michigan. In the beginning, years ago, I think the state of Michigan said, 10 years ago, "Let's get our kids an online experience. Let's have that be part of graduation." So over the last 10 years, Michigan Virtual has changed into something that it wasn't really in the beginning, and now they're educating thousands of public school students. The only problem is, is that their board is hand-selected, and there's no recourse for any kind of parents or any of that in what happens to their children being educated. It's also stated in the Michigan Virtual research that they did a year ago, that the mentorship that's being provided by the school districts to support the kids taking the online learning is lacking. They're clear on that. So we had a situation in Holt Schools where the kids were signed up three weeks late, and then the semester, online learning semester, ended one week sooner than Holt's regular semester for kids. So my kids were shorted four weeks of instruction. The executive director, Jamie Fitzpatrick, says, "It's okay. Kids sign up late all the time. No problem." So while my kids had an A in the class, they didn't have time to finish, they had a lot of unforeseen circumstances happen in their life. And if you take an online class, if anybody has, I'm sure you're well aware, that it can kind of be overwhelming, especially for first-time learners. So they didn't finish. We asked for a two-week extension. Based on MV policy, the assistant principal at Holt, the mentor at Holt, and the MV instructor wanted this extension for the kids. MV came back, their executive director, and said, "No. Not going to happen." Okay? And they stated self-pacing for the reason the kids weren't going to be able to have the extension. But yet, in the welcome letter of Michigan Virtual, it says, "There is no hard due date in this class. The only due date is the end due date." So my kids were held to a standard that, in the beginning, wasn't even stated to them. So my whole point is, the kids had an A in the content, but the executive director says, "It doesn't matter." The state says, "We want you to learn content, but the whole important part of this online experience is learning how to be an online learner." And my whole point is, these kids need two weeks to change an E into letting them complete and get their A. And everyone involved in the education process is saying, "Let's give this to the kids." And we have one person who cannot be challenged heading up Michigan Virtual, saying, "No. It's too messy." Even the superintendent of Holt has called him twice now. So like, I don't understand. Are we a locally controlled state? I mean, is the power reside within the education process and the educators? Or is it now being allowed to be given final say by a nonprofit, private, backed by millions from the state? So one last thing I wanted to read, and it's on the front page of the Top 10 in 10, it says, first of all, it says, "To realize Michigan becoming a top 10 education state in 10 years, the long-term embrace to the existing structure and system of education needs to be challenged and reshaped, giving everyone an opportunity to succeed." And secondly, one last sentence, "Michigan must establish..." dot, 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 "A system focused more on what is best for children in their learning and less on governance. The debate of school governance, too often, is the canvas that shrouds the real purpose of education opportunity." So while we're allowing an educational opportunity for kids in the state of Michigan to become online learners, where are we in supporting them? Why in the world do you not want to allow a child two weeks to turn an E that was an A originally, to let them finalize that and complete and become a good online learner? And this is huge in going forward in kids' future, being online learners. And I just think, as the state of Michigan, based on what's said in here, based on what lives in our hearts for kids, I think that we need to really take a look at what's going on here. So I thank everybody. I'm just passionate about these kids, and let's give kids an opportunity where it's clearly every educator involved wants to give the child an opportunity. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Brundage.
Thank you. I'm with the Michigan Coalition to Prevent Gun Violence, and I am here to speak to you about Senate Bill 584, 86, 87. It has long been the position of the coalition that we do not want guns in schools, period, open or concealed. As was last session, this is seen as a sort of compromise bill that will no longer allow open carry in our public schools, but will allow hidden, loaded guns in our schools. What could go wrong? Imagine, as I was walking up here, I saw all these beautiful children. They were kind of skipping down the mall and, you know, doing their government visitation day, I suppose. And those are the people that we must hold in our hearts as we think about this bill. It was fast-tracked through the Senate last week. Senator Mekoff had previously said that, you know, after Las Vegas, this really wasn't kind of an opportune moment to bring this bill forward. And then we had the shooting in Texas, and all of a sudden, it was the time to bring this bill forward. So it will affect our public schools, daycares, large venues, colleges and university classrooms, churches, all of those places that are currently gun-free zones, one will be able to carry concealed. So imagine that eighth grader whose girlfriend just broke up with him, and he knows his history teacher is packing, right? The kid maybe feels suicidal. It won't take a hot minute for the kid to get the gun and suicide, right? Or there's a playground fight. Or there's a parent who comes in and wants to talk about their kid's grade, got an A- minus instead of an A. Do we really want guns brought into that discussion? As our school boards discuss sensitive issues, important issues, do we really want people bringing a gun to that discussion? The coalition says, absolutely not. The only guns that belong in schools should be the ones that are brought in by trained law enforcement. When the bill was talked about, introduced, and then when it came up in the Senate, really some erroneous information was imparted as part of the testimony. Schools, as you know, through your work, are really safe zones. Our school boards, our teachers, the ancillary help in our schools do a wonderful job of keeping our guns safe. And mass shootings are almost always familial in nature. It's almost always a white guy shooting his wife and his children, and then himself. These kinds of atrocities don't happen in public schools. The thing that was really mistaken information was that it was reported that 90% or 97% of gun violence happens in gun-free zones. That is not true. It's not supported by the research. To the contrary, the research says that it is an impulsive act, and those kinds of mass shootings ordinarily, almost always, happen in a family situation. I think this board could definitely take leadership on this issue in much the same way as you took really good leadership, no, I don't remember, recently on the transgender issue. I think, I know that you take your responsibility for safety of all our children in your schools very seriously. And I really would encourage you to take a position, and take a public position, on no guns in schools, with the exception of trained law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Now we move to consent agenda. Are there any items the board wishes to have removed from the consent agenda prior to a vote? Chair, will entertain a motion? Been moved. Is there support? Any questions?
Um, let me just... Yeah. Thank you. Where am I looking? I probably had some questions about that. No, no, go ahead.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next, we move to comments by State Board of Education members, because we can't adjourn to our group till 3:30. So comments by State Board members? Are there any? At 1:30 is what I meant to say.
I'm just going to sit here for two hours.
I meant to say 1:30. But I did say 3:30. Eileen, please.
I just want to make sure that everybody knows that Lupe's about to become a grandmother again.
Oh, all right. We like that.
Maybe tomorrow, maybe.
Anytime.
And I wanted to say that Brian and I are, I'm scheduled to be at the same meeting that Brian is for the Education Committee of the States on Tuesday, November 28. In addition, I wanted to alert everybody to a couple of things. One is, the National Assessment Governing Board is holding a four-hour webcast, 8:30 to 12:30, on Friday, November 17, on current trends in international assessment. And the people who do PISA, TAMS, PEROLS, and also the student assessment that's going on in China and Germany, will be on discussing, because all of those tests take eight to 10 years of planning, talking about scenario-based assessments, which is what the Technology and Engineering Literacy Assessment is. Kids are given a puzzle, the data to draw testing from, and then reach conclusions, and then say whether their theory was supported or not. Actually, you would love that. The eighth grade, it's really, kids don't like, kids don't want to stop taking it, especially if they haven't curiedegi the Iguana. So they're looking at how to do things that engage children and really show, like PISA does, what kids know and can use at certain ages of the material they've learned. And if anybody's interested, I can get you an invitation to watch the webcast or part of it. There's no obligation. Also, I wanted to make sure that people know that I'm part of an effort that was organized by Doug Ross, who is Secretary of Commerce under Jim Blanchard, and Undersecretary under Bill Clinton, Mark Murray, who is the State Treasurer under John Engler, President of Grand Valley State University, is a former CEO of Myers, and Sharlande Buckman, who's resigned and has been replaced by somebody else, but, I'm sorry, I just don't have her name here, and she's wonderful. I've talked to her on the phone. But we are going around the state, meeting with entities that endorse gubernatorial candidates, mostly media, although some other organizations, too, asking them to elevate education to the number-one topic for the 2018 gubernatorial election. We will be in Lansing on Monday, and in Grand Rapids on 12 December 21. Dr. Zee had written an op-ed for the Detroit News's effort to support that. And that's it from me.
Other board members? Tom and Cassandra?
I met with local superintendents recently, and from upper-income and lower-income communities, and they all were very appreciative of the dashboard and that we're doing that instead of any kind of A to F. And they agreed with all the consequences that occurs with increased stakes on the testing. So I want to report that. I've been trying to get out the social media and the feedback on the dashboard. I do wish we had a better link, or at least to be able to, you know, telling people, if it was like, "MiParentFeedback.com" or something. So I do wish we had something better about that. And met with some folks on special education. I certainly feel that's another area that we should be focusing our attention on, as well as the State Board.
Thank you, Tom. Cassandra, please.
So I just want to circle back from the conversation we had before the break about the legislation that actually one of our speakers just mentioned. We did go back and find in 2015, there was a statement by the State Board of Education, and that was October 2015, that that was supported. It passed 7-1. And it basically reaffirmed our commitment to public safety, said that allowing weapons on school grounds only increases fear on the part of students and staff, and increases the chances of a catastrophic incident. And then the next two sentences talk about the specific bills that were introduced at that time. I would ask that we would consider, either at this meeting or the next meeting at the latest, updating this statement to reaffirm our commitment to the elimination of the open-carry loophole, and reaffirm that we do believe that local school boards, colleges, and university boards should have the authority to govern whether or not they allow weapons on their campuses.
So are you asking for a motion, or are you sending it to the Legislative Committee?
That's open to the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we entertain a statement at this board meeting.
All right. So what I would need is a motion to add to the agenda a statement on guns. That's what I would need first.
Exactly what I wanted to say.
Got it. That's been moved, and it's been supported. Any discussion on adding an agenda item on board taking a position on guns? Seeing none, we're going to call roll call, because I believe I'm not going to be able to tell what the vote is. Roll call, please.
I'll put it over here. I'm first.
Becto.
Aye.
McMillan?
Abstain.
You?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Abstain.
Ulbridge?
Yes.
Wiser?
She's not here. What do we do on that?
Sylee?
Abstain.
She would have said yes.
Four ayes, three abstain. We didn't get five, so we did not get the motion. Cassandra, please.
Then I would like to make a motion that we direct the Legislative Committee to come up with a statement on guns.
I don't have to make a motion.
Whatever you want, but normally we just say...
Second, second.
Okay. It's been moved. It's been moved to ask the Legislative Committee to take up a position on guns. Correct?
On this specific legislation. Whatever that looks like is...
On this legislation. Okay.
But even if they can still take it up.
Yes. Correct. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that?
Where's Eileen?
All right.
Should we wait for Eileen?
We know where Eileen is.
Where she went? Could knock on the bathroom door.
Did you see if she's standing out there?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Becto?
Support. Yes. Aye.
McMillan?
I'll let them decide. So abstain.
You?
Yes.
Ramos Montini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Abstain.
Ulbridge?
Yes.
Wiser?
Absent.
Sylee?
Abstain.
Okay. Motion does not pass. It doesn't stop the Legislative Committee from taking this up at the next meeting, though. Okay, future meeting dates, Tuesday, December 12, at 9:30, regular meeting, Tuesday, January... Oh, I'm sorry. Pam? Pam, sorry. I did not see you.
I apologize.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Cassandra Dureld, no, I'm joking.
No, she didn't. I'm sorry, Pam, go ahead.
I, again, thank the residents from Paw Paw for coming before us. I know I wasn't able to be at some of the hearings around the abolishment or the removal of the State Board of Education, but I know that one of the issues that came up was the fact that we have the residents here and this topic. So I do thank them for bringing this issue to the table, because this is a school issue. It's an issue where if we have an environment where students feel that they can't express themselves, can't talk about their beliefs and defend their beliefs, especially when we're talking about indigenous people who were here before all of us, then there's a problem. But I do think that it's more than just us talking about, it goes even beyond what we should, what they should be able to speak to, which is the mascots, but also the treatment as we're looking at the documents that we're seeing. It's great in sensitivity, and I'm hoping that we can at least be able to talk to schools about how they do bring all residents, all students, all parents to the table, and talk about these issues in a much more sensitive way than it's being handled. So I just wanted to, again, thank them for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Pam. Michelle, please.
Yeah, I want to thank you for reminding me, because, you know, I testified before the House, and there were several people from your community or near your community who was very, wanted to abolish our group because we took a position of supporting you and your community. And I was really caught off guard, and I regret that I didn't answer more clearly. And what I wanted to say was, you know, local control is good, but there are times when you need oversight. I know that as a special ed parent, because the majority may not want to deal with special ed kids in their school. And also, when you have a group that's a minority within a larger community, the rights of the minority can sometimes be railroaded or ignored, or be, or they can, you know, there can be discrimination and harassment, and that's why we have civil rights laws. And so I think the position of the department working with the Civil Rights Commission that was proposed in the Senate bill, I think, is wise. And there are times when a majority can be wrong. And that's why we have these rights that are the law of the land, and that's why our Constitution with the 14th Amendment, you know, supports those types of rights as well. So I wish I had said that.
And I'll just, if I could just add to that, because we did see that the chair of that committee who brought that up has since, you know, it's been exposed that other derogatory statements about other groups have been made. So I hope that we learn from that.
Lupe, please.
Okay. This was a very informative, good meeting, good presentations, good concerns brought up. Now, if the yeses, the yes vote for the gun issue, want to issue a statement today, what is the process?
Well, individual board members or groups of board members can always issue a statement. And so if a board member or group of board members wish to issue a statement, and Marty can help facilitate that, he's happy to always do that.
He looks happy.
He has a smile on his head.
Good times. Okay. So we don't have to do it in this setting. We can privately do that.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have reached 1:30, so we're going to go back to the next item on the committee, the whole agenda, which is competency-based education discussion sessions. At the October 10, 2017 State Board of Education meeting, we heard three local examples related to how districts and schools are personalizing learning through competency-based education. The board requested further discussion, so today we have four districts joining us to present on their competency-based education programs. We're pleased to welcome representatives of Kennewah Hills Public Schools, Fraser Public Schools, Oakland Schools, and Dexter Community Schools. You have heard presentations from three of those districts. Dexter has been added to provide this prospect of competency- Dexter has been added to provide this prospect of competency-based, as well as maintaining a traditional option model. Here are the logistics. There will be four breakout rooms. Each session has been allocated to be 20 minutes. Districts will present for three to five minutes, with the remaining time being open for questions from board members that are in attendance. Session liaisons will notify the participants when five minutes before the session ends, and which will signal to wrap up the conversation, prepare to rotate to the next sessions. We'll have people escort you from the next sessions so that you'll know where to go and have an opportunity to hear from all four schools and get your questions answered. The sessions are facilitators waiting for you outside the boardroom. There will be random groupings, and I think we've told each board members who the groupings are. And of course, anybody here in the audience is welcome to attend any one or all four of those sessions as well. Do we know what rooms these are in, so I can make that announcement? Or the guides will be outside.
We'll link you up with a facilitator, and you just go right with them.
All right. Of course, all of our guests, as I said, are welcome to attend the breakout sessions as well. Because we're going to four breakout sessions, those will not be on video. We'll be returning to the boardroom here at 3:10 for conclusion and adjournment of our meeting. So the meeting is not in recess. We are continuing the meeting. We're just breaking up into smaller groups, and everybody is welcome to participate. So thank you.
Okay. That's crazy.
Oh, my gosh. I hear you.